Welcome to the Frisco Podcast. I'm your host Scott Ellis and this episode, we are joined by John Keating, Frisco City Council, and he is currently running for reelection in the upcoming May elections. John, thanks for joining us today.
Thanks Scott, great to be here.
Good to have you here. So, hard to believe it's election time again already.
Not really. We are living in Texas. We like to have our elections. I think we have one every month, it seems.
It definitely feels that way. And we just had a general.
Primary.
Primary, thank you. And now we're heading into a city council election.
Correct.
And that is on May 5th?
Yes. Cinco de Mayo will be election day. Early voting will start April 23rd.
Wow, there's going to be a lot of extra margaritas served on that day then.
Yes, they will be at my house as well.
Okay, good. Yeah, I'm sure. I know that the, uh, the schedule of campaigning and, and building up to an election is always grueling for you guys, so.
Yes, not only for the candidate, but for the candidate's family, candidate's friends, um, lots of, uh, lots of time, talent, treasure out there that, uh, need to be rounded up and directed in a certain way. That's the political side of it. And then of course, once the elections are over, May 6th comes, and then you make the transition back to governance and doing the job you said you were going to do.
Right, right. So, on that front, you've been doing this for a while. You've been a part of Frisco City Council for some time. Why don't you give us a little bit of that background?
Sure, yes. Um, first came on in, uh, 2010, um, was reelected in 2013, and, uh, then reelected, if you will, to, um, the seat I'm holding now. So, uh, two terms and placed four, uh, came off for about a year and now, um, reelected, if you will, to, uh, place one. That was to fill an unexpired term, a one-year unexpired term.
Right.
So, one of our council members dropped off to, uh, run for mayor. So, filled that seat and, um, great to be back on council, great to be working with a new mayor. Uh, Jeff Chaney has just done a fantastic job, just very proud of him. Served with him for six years as, uh, when he was a councilman. Um, obviously, he did three, three-year terms. And, um, just did a great job. Uh, we've got a good team and, uh, want to stick with it, stay the course here in Frisco. We've got a lot of great things going on. Um, I've served as the Mayor Pro Tem of Frisco, and I'm currently serving as the Deputy Mayor Pro Tem of Frisco.
What is a guy, what exactly does that mean? Because I'm not sure that everybody understands mayor, mayor pro tem, deputy mayor pro tem.
Correct. Yes, I think it's, I think it, it, I think it means more to us as council members than it does actually to the citizens, but essentially, and not every city has it, but, um, in, in Frisco, just there is so much going on. We only have, you know, there's, there's only so much Jeff Chaney to go around, so, so we have to divide and conquer. So, your Mayor Pro Tem is actually your Deputy Mayor.
Okay.
And then your Deputy Mayor Pro Tem is your Deputy Deputy Mayor Pro Tem. So, we, we, we don't need a whole bunch of deputies out there, but, uh, of course, all council members, we all serve at large. There's no districts. We're there for the, to serve the entire city. But it just sort of establishes that, um, really for staff, as their, um, these, these calls go out for, uh, representative from the city, obviously, everyone wants the mayor. Um, so if the mayor is, is divided, then, uh, the, the, the first opportunity goes to the Mayor Pro Tem, second opportunity to Deputy Mayor Tem, and so on. So, it is a great position. It is voted on by your peers, by your fellow council members. And, uh, it's a position of honor on council. We sit to the left and right of the mayor. We help him run the meeting. Uh, Deputy Mayor Pro Tem has the responsibility of, um, leading the pledge, the invocation, uh, arranging the blue cards, which is the, um, the famous cards that, uh, citizens fill out when they come to council. Either to speak at, um, 7:30 PM during every city council meeting for citizen input, or if there's any item on the agenda they want to speak to, they can also fill out the card. And then we know that when that agenda item comes up, that they would like to be called as well to speak to those issues. So, there's a lot going on up on the dais, uh, during meetings, and it just helps the mayor to have some of those duties and responsibilities outlined and shared and appointed and, and, um, it just, uh, makes the meeting more efficient, gives everybody an opportunity to, um, focus on their tasks and, and keep the, the business of Frisco moving forward.
Very good. And I think a lot of people don't realize that the positions you guys hold are volunteer positions, including the mayor.
Correct.
I mean, it's, it is an absolute huge commitment of time and energy, um, but it is also a volunteer position.
Correct. It's, it's a labor of love. People ask, why, why on earth would anybody do this? So, why would you subject yourself to this? And, and really, it's, um, you know, unfortunately, sometimes the, the negative side of politics creeps into what we do, and that's certainly part of the, part of the process. And I think it's something we've become accustomed to over time. It can still be sometimes shocking for the average citizen. But at the end of the day, um, the paycheck is the thanks you receive, uh, from your friends and neighbors, from the citizens of Frisco, where they're very pleased with what our police and fire is doing, and what our response times are, and how our streets work. Um, you don't appreciate an illuminated street sign until you're in another city that doesn't have it.
Right.
And then all of a sudden, you realize, you know what? Uh, this is a pretty good place to live. These guys are doing a pretty good job. And that's the paycheck. Um, there's a stipend that we get. Uh, it isn't much. It's to help cover expenses of making coffees, taking constituents out for a coffee or for a lunch. These are things that obviously you want to pay yourself. Um, tolls, fuel, you know, um, commuting back and forth between city, city duties. Uh, I tore my check up on the, uh, my first day back in 2010. That saved the hard-working Frisco taxpayer about $25,000. But, um, you know, I felt that was, uh, a statement I wanted to make, just to sort of drive home the point that this is a volunteer position. I'm here solely, purely, 100% for the love of the city and the work that we're doing. And to, um, you know, to give, to give back, obviously, you hear that a lot from everyone. Hey, we want to find a way to give back. And we do that in different ways. It's with our churches, our charity, our school, or our community. Um, applaud the men and women in uniform, whether they're, um, Army, Navy, Air Force Marines, serving overseas, or our first responders who also put on a uniform every day and serve their country by serving their community.
Yeah.
So, it's a fantastic place to live. It's a wonderful place to raise a family. And, uh, we're just, um, really proud to be able to represent the, the citizens of Frisco in this capacity.
Well, yeah, Frisco is an amazing place to be right now. There's so much happening. There's so many good things about Frisco. Um, I don't even, almost don't even know where to begin. And a lot of it is, are things that, as citizens, I think we take for granted, you know, how, how well our first responders operate. Um, the fact that those, you know, street lights are always on and things like that. That still takes people to make all of that happen. And it's easy to take that for granted and sort of forget that behind the scenes, there's still a lot of work to keep all those things running, so.
Yes, a lot of good people. Um, we have what's, uh, in, in Texas, we have what's called a city manager form of government. So, yes, we do elect a mayor, we elect council. We, we act sort of as a, um, like a board on a corporation. So, George Purfoy is our CEO of Corporation Frisco, and he and his staff run the day-to-day, week-to-week, month-to-month operations. And it's really at the, um, at the 30,000-foot level for council, we're the keepers of the vision. We're the communication conduit between staff and citizens. Uh, we're out there in the world, um, working with our school districts, um, working with our citizens, working with those churches and charities, um, and those, those partners, those, um, corporate partners as well. Um, that, that's what brings us balance in our city. That's where we find that seamless, um, work with the district. Uh, that's why a lot of people move to Frisco. And then, once they're here, then they want, um, that quality of life. They want the parks, a great library, um, safe streets, uh, great places to shop, destination dining. Uh, they want to have fun. So, that's, uh, that's one of our, um, one of our key selling points, if you will, is that we've got a great school district. We've got some great public-private partnerships. Um, the citizens have been able, experienced that this weekend, kind of kicking off into, uh, Easter weekend and Passover was the opening of the entertainment district at the Star, hosted by Jerry Jones and the Dallas Cowboys.
It was a fun day.
It was a wonderful, it was three days. I mean, um, you know, Mr. Jones, as he famously said, he's caught, uh, the Frisco flu, the Frisco fever. And, uh, man, he has just demonstrated over and over his love for the city and, uh, just his capacity for fun and entertainment and destination dining and, uh, promoting the Cowboys. I mean, it's not even football season. And we're, we're, we're down there. The doors are open. The sun is out. It's, the fun is going. The music's playing. Uh, packed green was fantastic. The place was packed. And everybody had fun. We, I mean, just the emails, the phone calls, the texts we get, uh, just blowing up. People are just so happy and so excited and just so proud of Frisco.
Yeah, the Star has really done an amazing job. And there's certainly other, other developments that are up and coming that'll be here in the near term, but for right now, that's kind of the big one that got its, you know, got, came out of the gate. And it's so nice to be able to go out and have fun, to sit down on a patio or a nice restaurant, to take in a little entertainment and not have to leave Frisco.
Yes.
And there's so much more of that to come. But, we're here today to talk about you, because you're running for reelection. So, let's get back to that.
All right.
What I want to talk about now is some of the, what are the items that you would call your platform? What are the things that have been most important to you that make you want to stay on city council and keep pushing things forward?
Well, you know, you, you always hear me talk about public safety as being job one. If you aren't truly safe, you aren't truly free. And, you know, we've seen incidents around the country, either in the workplace or at schools, where, um, people's lives are threatened, certainly our, our children's lives. And that's something we take very seriously. We have a wonderful, uh, GIS system, which is a, which is a mapping system here in Frisco, where we've literally got the entire city building streets, everything, schools, um, houses mapped down to about, uh, one foot by one foot. And then from that, we can build out. So, now we know where, and there's, and then we, you place electronic overlays over that. So, you know where all your streets and sidewalks and, and wires and pipes and plumbing, everything that's under the ground and above ground. So, and then you can build on that with our Safer program, which we use with police and fire, where we have, um, cameras in certain areas on the, on the streets. Obviously, we're not, we don't want to violate anyone's privacy, but these are on the public streets, and then also in our schools. So, if there's ever a fire or an incident or anything like that, the data is immediately transmitted to the police or the fire, and they can see into that school, or they can see into that, that, um, that public place, and determine exactly what's going on. Is there a fire? Is there an active shooter situation? What's going on? And then they can direct accordingly and, um, and, and keep our citizens and our, and our children safe. Uh, on the ground, boots on the ground, we've got our SROs, our, our, um, Student Resource Officers. There's one in each high school, one in each middle school, and then they rotate through the, um, through the elementary schools. Obviously, we don't have as many problems of drugs and violence in, in an elementary school. So, um, they build those relationships with the kids. Um, they're there to work with the school district, work with the teachers and, and work with the students, and build that positive relationship with our young people. So, as they grow older, um, they know that they can trust and respect the police officers, uh, to treat them fairly and to, um, to be there for them, um, if, if they ever need them.
Very good. Other topics, other things that are high on your list?
Sure, sure. You know, as Frisco builds out, um, we, we, I hear often, traffic issues and apartments. Uh, since about 2000, um, you know, our staff, our mayors, our city council, you know, we don't always agree, but on that item, we were united. And we said, no more garden-style apartments. We have enough of that product. Um, one of the challenges is, so we haven't, since 2000, we haven't, we haven't approved any new garden-style apartment. Um, part of the challenge is there is that back in the eighties and nineties, there was what, what was called zoning for dollars. And that occurred in the region, so it wasn't unique to Frisco. Plano, Allen, McKinney are all experiencing this. Where now that their communities are getting built out, and now that this growth and this, um, development and this wealth is coming into the area, then these apartments are now coming out of the ground. So, we've, um, approached it a couple of different ways with those developers to say, either, please just don't build that type of product. Let's do something different. So, long story short, we've reduced the number of apartments by 60%, and we're continuing to do that over the years. So, yes, you will see some urban living models come out. So, instead of just a garden-style apartment, which has no amenities and an open parking lot, and nothing to offer anyone, and the goal there, obviously, for the developers, to fill it and sell it, fill it and flip it. So, with an urban, um, lifestyle, you've got all, you've got the five key elements. You've got people who live there, people who work there, people who shop there, people who dine there, and entertainment. Um, which would include a hotel and maybe a convention center, sort of, you know, destination type of, uh, environment. Um, less, that generates less traffic. You can walk, you know, walkability. Uh, you can, you can walk out of your apartment. You can do some light shopping. You can, you can go out and eat. There's entertainment nearby, and possibly your office space is nearby. So, it's, it's, the urban living concept is what we're switching to. And remember, we're trying to get away, we're trying to move that developer away from that garden-style apartment to a development that, um, generates not only more revenue for them, but it, it has a higher, um, property tax footprint for the city. And then at the same time, we're now attracting Fortune 500 companies, so hopefully Fortune 100, Fortune 50, because now you have that office space, you have that walkability, and that's what millennials want. I often talk about, um, the, uh, the homeownership and the, um, car ownership bell curve are now almost the same, where young people are waiting longer to buy a car or buy a home. And now our senior citizens are selling the home and selling the car quicker. So, that bell curve is shrinking. That homeownership, that vehicle ownership, uh, bell curve is, is shrinking, because everyone wants more walkability. They want services. They don't want the car ownership and the expenses that come with it, the fuel, the insurance, the tolls. And then the same thing with homeownership, with rising property taxes. Um, homeownership has just become too expensive for a young person, too expensive for an older person who's retired and on a fixed income. For a millennial, a commute now means getting on a plane. It doesn't mean getting into a car. And with Uber and Lyft and these other services, they don't need the car. They don't want the car. It's no longer the status symbol. Now, it's actually, if you have a car, you're, you're, you're behind the times. You're, you're, you're not with it.
That blows my mind. I can't tell you how many friends, uh, we have who have kids that are driving age and do not have their driver's license. Which, growing up in the, you know, at, at the time that I did, and I got my driver's license in the eighties, it was, like, you couldn't wait to get your license. You were
Right.
Like, come on, Dad, let's go. We're going down. It's the day. Let's go.
It's a rite of passage.
Yeah, absolutely. And now they're just like, yeah, I don't want to bother with it. And, and I, I kind of see the wisdom in that. I don't know that I'm ready to give up my car quite yet, but, um, it's interesting that we're seeing more and more of that come along and, and how Frisco is adapting to that need and that desire, and to some degree, that future. Because I know there are a number of transportation options and different things that Frisco is looking at for the future. Uh, in fact, I think we shared an article not long ago, that Frisco was given an award for their transportation plan. Um, and we caught a bunch of flack for it, because everybody's like, what are you talking about? The traffic here is a nightmare. And it's like, no, 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 not, not for now, for the plan they're putting in place and what they're planning to do. Um, so, I know you guys are thinking about this a lot. You're addressing this a lot, and it is a very common concern.
Absolutely. And pouring more concrete and putting in more traffic lights isn't always the answer. That, it's not a one-size-fits-all for, for Frisco. Uh, we're looking at roundabouts. They're not traffic circles. They're roundabouts. They're designed specifically for that intersection. And that, that's what makes them a little bit more expensive. Um, you know, pouring more concrete. In some areas, we're simply restricted because the road was put in under an old standard that we've since changed, but that part of the community is now developed on both sides, so we can't go wider. So, we've got to go into the median. Well, there are some trees there that have been there for a long time that people are in love with, and they finally, you know, they're matured, and they've got a wonderful canopy, and what do we do? So, we do have a great tree program where if a tree comes down, another one goes up, and not necessarily in the same place, but somewhere in Frisco. So, there, there are compromises that have to be made. But, um, you know, Legacy Road is a perfect example. It, uh, doesn't need more traffic lights, probably doesn't need more concrete. It certainly does need to be redone, because it's, it's, um, it's kind of buckled and cracked in a number of places.
I was going to talk to you about that, by the way.
All right. I've got my notebook on. So, tho- those are, those are how we're addressing those things. So, when new roads come in, in fact, just to the north of the Star, there's a roundabout there. And, um, um, there's some other roundabouts planned for the city along Ohio and Warren, Ohio and Gaylord. Um, those are still being planned and budgeted, and we're still getting, um, community input on that. That, roundabouts will work in an area where you've got local neighborhood traffic, where those folks will drive it every day. They'll learn it. They'll become accustomed to it, and their traffic will keep moving. Versus Preston Road, which is all four-way intersections and traffic lights and gets backed up all the time. Part of the other challenge is just simply working with our regional partners, with, uh, with Plano for the Light Controls along 121 to the south, and then obviously to the north, 380. Um, working with those cities, uh, up there to get 380 built out properly, to kind of figure out what our setbacks need to be, because we want to develop on both sides. Um, there's already some great commercial going in, and, um, you know, we want to keep that going. That, that goes back to the balance. That goes back to that tax rate, where we don't want the burden to be on the homeowner. We want it, we want it to be shared with corporate America and the businesses and the places that we shop. We want that sales tax revenue to come in. So, I think we've done a good job kind of switching the commentary here over to, um, over to the tax rate a little bit. Uh, I think Frisco did a fantastic job under Jeff Chaney, Mayor Chaney's leadership here with the seven-and-a-half percent homestead exemption. Um, councils voted three times to lower taxes while I've been on, and I think this, um, seven-and-a-half percent exemption is a, is a home run. It, um, gives you more than double what Senate Bill Two offered. It, um, emphasizes and rewards local control, and it gives you an effective tax rate of around 41 cents. You add in, for our senior citizens, or as I like to say, our seasoned citizens, you put in their, um, $70,000, uh, senior homestead exemption, if you're 65 and older, that gives you an effective tax rate of around 31 cents. So, that's incredible. What I, but when people ask me, John, why is my tax bill so high? I have to remind them, the city, your tax bill, um, the city only represents maybe 25% of that. Your school district is the, is the huge portion of that. They're, they're at about a dollar 45 versus our 45 cents.
Wow.
It's incredible. And then if you're in Collin County, you've got the college, which is, which is reasonably priced. And then you've got, um, um, you know, your, your regular, uh, county taxes, obviously, on, on top of that. So, we're blessed to have, um, two conservative, um, counties. The, the leadership there's been, been great. Um, the Collin College is, is a wonderful example of higher education at a, at an affordable price that's here, that our, that our high school kids engage in. Um, our local community can engage in with continuing education, and also just some great, some great classes. I took one, uh, recently. Um, the Disney Institute had a leadership.
I was just thinking about that one when you said that. Yeah, so they do things for like that for the public as well that are pretty cool.
Yeah, it's really, it's fantastic. It's fantastic. We had a lot of city staff there, and then a lot of, um, corporate leadership there around the room. A lot of, it was great to see a lot of our corporate partners.
Leadership development, or what was the premise of that particular class?
That one truly was leadership development. They have others on customer service and HR and, and some different things like that. But it's, it's Disney. So, it's going to be
Yeah.
very informative, but also entertaining. It's gonna, it's just very accessible and a lot of fun.
I wanted to go to that. I didn't make it, but I really wanted to. That sounded like a good one, so. Okay, so what about, so those are some of the items that are, I know, top of your list. Are there other things that you're hearing about, um, you know, that you'd like to take this opportunity to address that, as you're going out and knocking on doors and talking to people during the campaign that you know are, are high on people's lists, things they're thinking about or concerned about?
Well, I think, um, you know, for a while, everyone was, uh, concerned about what our build-out number was going to be and what that was going to look like, and what, what ultimately would Frisco look like at the end of the day. We're about 60 to 70% built out. And what I, what I remind people is that whatever changes come, doesn't necessarily impact what we already have. Uh, we talk about green space. When we talk about, um, corporations moving here, and we talk about more neighborhoods being built, or the urban living model, um, it's not, you, you don't have to give up your house or your business for these, for these new things to come. You can instill, you can still enjoy the quality of life that you have. And remember, we're still, um, acquiring park space, almost 400 acres here just recently, what we call, uh, programmed park space, which means it'll have ballparks and sports fields and things like that. Um, huge demand for that here. We have so many young families moving here, again, because the school district is great, again, because we have so many corporate headquarters in the area. So, it's just a fantastic place to raise a family, fantastic place to raise an athlete. And we see that. We know that. We're proud of that. So, we're building out, we're building out to that. Um, certainly, we want to, uh, we want that corporate edge, uh, coming here to Frisco. We, we continue to compete with that. Um, and that's always been a, a long-range goal, just to, uh, to, so you can, you can truly have that work, live, learn, play experience in Frisco. Um, we've got some exciting things coming up through the north. You, you've seen sort of the south and central portions of Frisco be developed. And now sort of that, that core, that center, um, moving up to the north along 380, our northern border. And we've got some exciting things in the works there. We've got, um, like I said, more, more parks, more, um, sports activities coming, more higher education opportunities coming, more corporate opportunities coming. But to the Frisco standard, to that high standard of, uh, we really want this to be destination. We want it to be exciting. We want it to be, uh, home for conferences, where people come not just from around the country, but from around the world to visit Frisco and to have that authentic Frisco experience. While at the same time, we're holding, we're, we're, our response times are up, our taxes are low, our school district is fantastic. Uh, this is still the place you want to live, work, and play. We've got a handle on, on traffic. We've, we've eliminated these, um, you know, we're not building any new garden-style apartments. And what we are building is, is expensive, high-end, uh, living, not just, you know, assisted living for seniors, um, corporate living, uh, living that the millennials are attracted to. Uh, we've got some great homes for sale here. That's fantastic. We don't, you know, there's a caution about saturating our, our market with single-family homes. And we've got some big neighborhoods that are still developing, that are still building. So, we need that other product. We need that urban living, that urban environment product, and we're doing it smart. We're putting that near our major corridors. We're not going to put that in your neighborhood or next to your school. We're going to put that in a place near those major corridors, where those, um, those folks can get right on and off the freeway. We're not clogging up our feeder roads, our neighborhood streets, things like that. So, there's a lot of, um, long-range vision, long-range planning, a lot of innovation. Uh, we want to obviously protect our Texas culture, our, our Frisco way of life. And I think you've, you've got a fantastic, uh, mayor, fantastic staff, and dare I say, a, uh, an incredible council, that I would certainly like to remain a part of.
You guys have been doing a great job so far, so please keep up the good work. But before we go, I want to give people just a little bit more about you. Uh, you were in the military, correct?
Yes, sir. Yep. 13 years Army, was a counterintelligence agent, uh, greatest job in the world, best leadership training you can get. Uh, very proud of that. Um, was in Korea just before the Summer Olympics, helping host nation security prepare for that event. And then, uh, deployed one of the initial deployments for, um, the Gulf War, Operation Desert Shield, Desert Storm. Uh, was there for that entire period of, uh, of conflict, both Desert Shield and, um, Desert Storm. And, um, very proud of the work I did with, um, SOTF, uh, my final four years in the service, the Special Ops Task Force. A great honor and privilege to work with those folks. And, um, came out of that, and, uh, life changed completely. Met Leslie, finished my college degree, started a financial services business, had our first son, moved to Texas, had our second child. Uh, very proud of Ryan and Zach. Zach's a, um, going to embarrass them both here a little bit. Zach's a sophomore up at University of Arkansas.
Okay.
On the Business Honors Program, amazing kid, following in his mom's footsteps with, um, a business degree and, uh, focus in, um, logistics and supply chain management and operations. And then Ryan's amazing as well. Ryan's our football player. Uh, he's up at Frisco High, the original Frisco High School, the Raccoons. And, um, he's a junior up there. He'll start his, uh, final senior year next year, so we're very proud of him. Very excited. He's, he's on the college hunt right now. Um, likes Arkansas. Uh, he's not shying away from that just because his brother's up there. Uh, likes OU. You know, we've taken him around Texas, taken him down to Louisiana, so, um, some of the different schools kind of in this region, this area. So, he's, he's pretty excited about that. Uh, my wife Leslie's amazing. We'll be celebrating our 22nd anniversary on April 20th.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you. Yeah, very proud of her. She had, uh, 31 years at Free to Lay, um, just retired last year. She's consulting now, so I like to joke, she took, she has, she's had one day of retirement. Went right back to work. So, very proud of her. Uh, that allows me the opportunity to, um, volunteer in the community. Uh, serve my country by serving my community, as I like to say. Um, was on the PTA for seven years here in Frisco. Got the, uh, Texas PTA Lifetime Member Award, something I'm very proud of for the fundraising I did on behalf of teachers and students. Um, received the PepsiCo, um, from Pepsi, the, uh, the Valor, their Valor Award, which I was very excited about last year. And then this year, received the, um, um, US Congressman Sam Johnson's, uh, veteran commendation in, in, in this year. So, so very, uh, proud of the recognition I've received. And just at that, at those moments, when, when you're being recognized and thanked, it's always, um, you know, I always want to shout out, um, thank you to my family. And thank you to my friends, and certainly to our veterans that continue to stand guard today for, out on freedom's frontier, so that, so that we can do these things. We can live our lives and have this fun and, and have these experiences and raise our families and, and just, um, be proud of Frisco and, and proud of Texas.
And live in a great place like Frisco.
Amen.
John, thanks so much for joining us today, and thank you for all the things that you do in the community. I mean, being on the city council is one thing, and that's huge. But I know you're doing a lot of other things as well as you just described, so we really appreciate that. And there's a spirit of, of volunteerism in Frisco that's a little unlike anything I've seen, anyplace else I've lived. And, uh, you know, with you guys up there leading the way, I'm sure that will continue.
Absolutely. We've got some great local charities, um, that have grown up with the city. They're fantastic. Fast Packs is one that's, um, um, relatively new, I think only because they're just getting their name out there, but they've been in the background for a number of years and have done a fantastic job of feeding, um, our, some of our disadvantaged kids. And, uh, that's just been an incredible program. And then, of course, everyone's familiar, I think, with the Boys and Girls Club of Collin County. It's, that's been a, a, um, part of the foundation of of Frisco's growing. And then of course, the Frisco Family Services and the work that they've done and how they've expanded. You know, Frisco just took these things on themselves. They could have, they could have partnered with other charities, but they thought, you know, let, let's, let's design what we need for Frisco. And these things have flourished. You can see it in our sports programs. They're all the Frisco-based, the Frisco Football League, the Frisco Baseball Softball Association, the Frisco Soccer Association. It's all Frisco-based, that, that, that our community volunteers, our moms and dads, our city staff have, have worked onto focus to bring, again, that authentic Frisco experience to our families. And, and that is job number one, to keep Frisco family-friendly.
Well, we're doing a great job of it so far. Let's keep up the good work. Best of luck in the upcoming election. And thanks again for joining us today.
Thanks. I'd invite everyone to visit the website for more information, keatingforfrisco.com. It's F-O-R, keatingforfrisco.com. And by all means, there's a way to either volunteer, donate, or reach out, or ask questions, get more information.
Are there opportunities for people to meet you in person coming up anytime soon?
Certainly. There's, you know, I'm available for coffee, one-on-one. We've got a couple of events coming with the campaign. There's one at Verona Villa on this Sunday from 4:00 to 6:00 PM. We do ask people to RSVP for that, but you can find it on Facebook, under Keating Frisco is my campaign page. Or you can search for John Keating on there and friend me or message me, and we can get you more information about that event. But that'll be Sunday, 4:00 to 6:00 PM at Verona Villa, which is a new facility on 121 and Stone Brook, to kind of give you an idea of where it's at. And Will Sewell is also running for city council for his, for his place. We're not running against each other. And we're also not running together as a ticket. But this is an event that we thought, given the short runway with the primary, we let the primary folks run their races. And then it unfortunately gives us a very short runway for our race. So we thought, we work well together, we're good friends, why not co-host an event so we can, we can get
Very good.
Maximum exposure and really give the citizens an opportunity to hear our, hear our message.
Okay. So that's an excellent opportunity. But keep your eyes on Facebook or keatingforfrisco.com to learn more. And I love how accessible you are as well. So if you, if you're out there listening to this and you've got questions, you want to sit down, have coffee with John, send him a message through his website. And I'm sure you guys will get that set up.
Yes. And you can find us on the city website as well, friscotexas.gov.gov. And all your council members, all your staff, your mayor, everybody's on there. Our phone numbers, our emails are on there. Jakeating@friscotexas.gov. You can send me an email anytime. It's just an easy way to reach out to us. We, we want that transparency. We want that visibility. We want to hear from you.
All right. Well, there you have it. John, thanks again for joining us. Thanks to all of you for tuning into the Frisco Podcast. Hope you get out and vote. Please get out and vote. Local elections have historically low numbers of turnout. And in my opinion, and I've said this probably 100 times on this podcast now, they're the most important elections for you to get out and cast your vote. And these are, are people that are making decisions that you can have direct access to, that will affect your day-to-day life in Frisco, Texas. So please, there's going to be early voting. There are never lines, ever lines of any kind to vote in the local elections. This isn't like what you saw in the presidential election last year or the year before. So please just get out there, vote, and make your voice heard. We'll talk to you next week. Thanks, John.
Thank you very much.
You're listening to RNCA, the digital destination for premium talk radio.